Excellent. The relationship we have with Central Station couldn't be any better. Things have progressed very rapidly and very appropriately. And as of, I believe it was a few, two or three months ago, 9/11, myself and one of my assistants was actually named to the emergency operations center so that we can better communicate with the business community and the city in the event of an emergency in the future.
And do you have any other bids in the city, or is that the only one you have?
We only control downtown center bid. However, we are a very cooperative effort with the Fashion District, the Historic Core, the Figaro Corridor, and the Central Cities Association.
We can use some help out in that San Fernando Valley. We're struggling with some bids at this particular time, and I may direct them to contact you to get some guidance, because I will compliment you and your staff. You folks do a tremendous job down there with the maintenance and the security. I travel through that area frequently, and it's been a dramatic change in that environment, and really attributed to your leadership and the coordination and the efforts. Absolutely turned it around 110 percent.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we'll be ready for a vote. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Glanter, Han, Holden, Labange, Pacheco, Perry, Weiss, Zine, Padilla.
Ten eyes.
That being an ordinance does carry over for a second reading.
It's not being a second reading. Mr. President, next on the agenda is item 19, called "Special," as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard.
Item number 19 is now before us. Before council discussion, the council calls forward Melrose Larry Green.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Melrose Larry Green. I live in the beautiful 4th District, represented so well by Tom Labange, who is here, unlike five of the members tonight. Tom Labange is here. And I want to, before I make my brief comment, I want to thank Walt Hennig for coming here. And I want to stress the positive, not the negative, so I won't talk about the five that are not here. But all you that came here tonight, thank you. Item number 19 is a communication from chair member of Public Safety Committee relative to a donation of surplus military equipment for use by the LAPD. Well, of course, I support this. There's lots of surplus military equipment available that can be used not only by the LAPD, but can be used by Department of Transportation, by street maintenance, by even the Board of Education. And I think this is a great use of the $58,300 from the California County Drug Procurement Program for use by the LAPD. This is great. This is what's called utilization of available resources. And there's plenty of surplus military equipment that can be used by the City of L.A. Happen to be looking through this. Usually, I only speak on the things I can understand, and I can understand item 19, so I support it. Thank you. I'm Melrose Larry Green.
Thank you, Mr. Green. This concludes public comment on item number 19. Are there members of the council wishing to speak on item 19? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, would you please open the roll?
Glanter, Han, Holden, Labange, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla.
Ten eyes.
That item is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 21, called "Special," as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard.
Item number 21 now before us. The council calls forward Ms. Peggy King, followed by Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
My name is Peggy King, and I'm chairperson of the Western Heights Historic Preservation Overlay Zone, which I'm sure Councilman Holden will recall. I would like to express my enthusiastic support for the Victoria Park Neighborhood HPOZ. Our own HPOZ is small and relatively new, but we've already been able to make some positive changes in the neighborhood. We've used our influence to help an elderly neighbor get a roof that she very much needed and that the Housing Department had been, the Department of Housing had been dragging their feet on for two years. I'm proud to say that of all the projects that have been brought before us in the last year that we've been in existence, we have approved or reached mutual agreement on all of them. And I ask the city council to approve the Victoria Park HPOZ so that their neighborhood can enjoy the same benefits of local control that Western Heights has enjoyed from this valuable ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Hawkins?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ms. Sylvia Aleni Hawkins from District Number Eight. Also, in the process of running for councilwoman of District Number Eight, as Mark Ridley Thomas is running for office concerning Assembly Forty-Eight. Also concerning number 20, on item number 20, I'm concerned about, I'm very happy to see this panel here. I'm very happy to see our public officials out in the public instead of always in the City Hall of Los Angeles. It's very good that the public can see who, amen, clap for your council. We're very happy to see our housing authority, our council board, our directors in the community and working in the community. Also concerning number 21, I'm very concerned about our schools, parks, safety zones, and museums of zones of built-in bombs that might be inside of our old concrete. For example, USC University Coliseum Memorial, and also at Inglewood High School, plus the Forum, and Inglewood Cemetery. In Inglewood, on Florence, I used to work there for six months for Inglewood Cemetery. I saw the danger of it doing, I saw the danger of it needing to be closed down because of the gray site stone that I saw inside of, inside that said, "This person died in 1612", in year 1612. And then I asked a question concerning, how long has it been opened, the museum, not museum, how long has the cemetery been open? And then they asked, they told me the answer, but how is a cemetery going to be open 1612? Which I saw applied.
Ma'am, that's not the matter before us. The matter before us is a historical preservation overlay zone.
Okay, I'm concerned.
Please limit your comments to the matter at hand, and we do have other speakers, so I won't ask you to conclude.
Okay, okay. I'm very concerned about the safety zone of these areas as old buildings, and it's been up too long at Inglewood Cemetery.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Ms. Dina Russell.
As seen to Priscilla, let's present out a Wilson. Good evening, and thank you for being here and coming out to the community this evening. Mr. Holden has been a friend of our neighborhood, which is Country Club Park neighborhood, a search for a long time. And I personally want to thank him for always making his staff and office available to us to hear our issues and concerns and working with us in a positive manner. I'm here tonight in support of a historical overlay zoning for our district, and ours is a historic, old historical community in Country Club Park. And we solicit the council approval and efforts to get our area and community declared historical. I think that this is a great benefit for the generations that will come after being to preserve our district and keep it beautiful and amenable to urban living as a positive example to the community and to the generations to come after us. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much. I do believe the Country Club Neighborhood Historic Preservation Overlay Zone is item 24. That matter has been approved, so congratulations. We thank you for your comments. And this concludes public comment on item number 21. Are there members of the council wishing to speak on item 21? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Glanter, Han, Holden, Labange, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Congratulations.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, I just want the public to know that I have put LAX as a safer place because of the individuals who join us tonight. He's Vice President of the Air Force Commission. He's been serving there for more than eight years. Gives up his time without any salary to make it work for us. Doctor Juan Valdez, give him a big hand. Doctor, a big applause, por favor. And in government, you know, you talk about it's political. Political, it's local. All politics is local. Reserving streets and trimming trees, and this goes on. So we're very proud to have, with this, tonight, an individual who came up to me and said, "I'm back in your district." Said to me, "I'm going to regress to his district." Palms in your district. Glad to be back with you. You gave us good service before, and we know you're doing it again. He's the Director of Undergraduates and Student Services, Department of Political Service for the University of Southern California, Director Paul Corbett. Give him a big hand. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Item number 23, a member of the public wishes to be heard. Item number 23 now before us. And we have a number of speakers on this item. The council calls forward Adam Hanedo, followed by Robert Boucher, Karen Hathaway, and Jim Lancaster. If you can begin to line up behind the podium, that might expedite.
Mr. President, members, there are a number of people who indicated they'd like to speak on this Historic Preservation Overlay Zone in Jefferson Park Neighborhood area. I don't even think we have any opposition, but we still could hear maybe from one person to elect to speak. And of course, I would respectfully request then that we add for an I vote.
Okay, let me go ahead and read out all the names of the people wishing to speak. If you want to address the council, you're more than welcome to do so, as Mr. Holden has said. If you're willing to concede your time to another speaker or to keep your comments brief, I think we'd all appreciate that as well. Adam Hanedo, Robert Boucher, Karen Hathaway, Jim Lancaster, L.B. Nye, David Saffer, Sally Turner, Holly Heaven, Stevie Stern, and John H. Arnold.
I'm Adam Gennaro, and I will speak on behalf of all those persons. I'd like to thank Mr. Holden personally. We all enthusiastically support the HPOZ for Jefferson Park. The concept has already been presented. Two block clubs into Louis South, broader based neighborhood groups. And without any dissent at all, we border neighborhoods to the north, Kinney, Western, and Harvard Heights that already have this designation, so we are familiar with it. We appreciate what's done for those neighborhoods, and we would like to do the same for ours. We'll parlance while we're here. I think the Big Dipper would call this one a slam dunk. Thank you very much.
Other members of the public, other members of the public by name wishing to be heard? If not, please note that your names and cards will be added to the council record. Members of the council wishing to be heard? Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Reyes.
I just add for an I vote, Mr. President. This is what the people want in the community, and I've always, this is to the people, they want it, they think it's good for the community, and I believe it is. I'll just add for an I vote. Mr. Reyes?
Yes, I just wanted to congratulate and applaud the citizenry for working and establishing these historical zones. I think it's important as the city continues to essentially redefine itself, that we preserve our history and our architecture, our structures, our symbols of that history. And it gives us that sense of place that, quite frankly, will give our children and those young people who are seeking issues of identity, reinforcement of neighborhoods, that we are able to look at these types of settings in such a way we can praise the architecture, the history, the people, all that mix of a community. So I just want to congratulate Councilmember Holden for moving forward in this direction as we enrich our city's history. Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Glanter, Han, Holden, Labange, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla. That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 25 is called "Special" by Councilmember Pacheco. Mr. Pacheco?
Mr. President, I just wanted to highlight item 25 because I believe it's a demonstration of what the community and the city can do jointly. On the intersection of Folsom and Soto in the community of Boats Heights, we very recently, in the last couple of years, assisted in opening up a childcare center on the east side of that intersection. And even more recently, we spent, and the Housing Department assisted us, on the southwest corner of Southern Folsom to rehabilitate a seven-unit abandoned and vacant building. And so very soon, we're going to have families living in that corner. And one of the end results of revitalization and redevelopment in our neighborhoods, as we create new pedestrian crossing areas because of these great services that we bring forward, is the need to protect these pedestrians from traffic flow and the issue of traffic safety. We were fortunate to have the Target Neighborhood Initiative, a great program that the block grant, Consolidated Plan, funds throughout the City of Los Angeles, and many of us have them in our districts. We're fortunate that the residents who make the decisions in that program decided that it was in the best interest of the community to place a traffic signal in there. And so our office is facilitating and delivering a traffic signal on the corner of Folsom and Soto. But I wanted to demonstrate to the body here and to all those on Channel 35 and the residents here, that we do have programs in place, not only the neighborhood councils, Target Neighborhood Initiatives, that allow local community residents to make local decisions about city services and public improvements. And item 25 is a direct example of how the city is working and giving local decision to local individuals. And I just wanted to commend all the volunteers and residents of the Boats Heights Targeted Neighborhood Initiative and ask for your approval of this new traffic signal in that community.
Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Labange, followed by Ms. Han.
I see Councilman Pacheco is very good to see that improvement in the Target Neighborhood Initiative. I see our mayor here from our Department of Transportation. Maybe you could give some briefing on traffic signals and the importance of safety and how they get funded, coordination, et cetera. This is the council liaison.
Good morning, Council President.
Good morning. That's because he's in every council meeting at 10 o'clock.
Every morning, every morning. Thank you very much. I'm here with the Department of Transportation, and as Councilman Pacheco mentioned, that's one of the new signals that's going on in Boats Heights. And that was one of the measures that we were able to find extra funding for the signals that the department, on an average, puts about 15 new signals throughout the city. We have about 10 smart pedestrian warning signs. These are the signals that automatically go off when a pedestrian steps off the curb. We have programs in top 25 intersections throughout the city where we're doing safety-related improvements. We're doing left turn phasing. We're installing these beacons that I mentioned to you about the safety program. So we're looking forward and working with every single one of these council offices and coming up with their list of important projects to make sure safety is number one to all of the districts.
Well, thank you. I just want to also say, too, appreciate any traffic signalization. I know you're doing some at Fairfax as well, which the developer's going to pay for at that farmer's market area, but all this leads to a safer intersection, because traffic safety is so important and to prevent injury or accidents, and these signals do help people cross the street. So I think it's real important on Soto or any street in the City of Los Angeles. Thank you.
With that, I will say good night, since it is night.
Thank you. Thank you for presentation. Thank Commissioner Labange. Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, too, just want to speak up on the positive impact that I believe these targeted neighborhood initiatives are having all over the city, because as Councilman Pacheco said, this was a great program where, instead of downtown City Hall making the decisions on how to spend money in your neighborhood, this money was promised to certain neighborhoods throughout the city over a period of three years. And it was the people who lived in the community that decided how that money would be spent. And in my opinion, there's nothing better we can do to bring government to the people to empower communities and neighborhoods than to let them make the decisions on how the money is spent in their neighborhood. And we've got to do more of that. I still think there's a lot of decisions that are better made at the local level than downtown City Hall. So this is a great example. Anytime that's going to happen, we ask for everybody to get involved. Because you don't want only a few neighborhoods making the decisions on how that money is spent. So get involved, be a part of how your money is spent in your neighborhood. Yeah, I have a couple of targeted neighborhood initiatives in my district, in the 15th district, and they're very exciting, and it really has empowered my neighborhoods and my communities in terms of how to spend that money.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Other members wishing to be heard on this item? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Glanter, Han, Holden, Labange, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla.
Ten eyes.
That is approved.
Mr. President, there is also a special meeting agenda. Did you wish to recess the regular meeting and go into a special?
Recess the regular meeting temporarily, and would you please call the roll on the special meeting?
First, Glanter Garcia, Grill, Han, Holden, Labange, Ms. Kowski, Pacheco, Reyes, Perry, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla. Ten members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you for sort of business. Special item number one is an item for which public hearing has not been held. It is a communication from the city attorney, contains an ordinance, and Public Works Committee has waived this matter. Okay, seeing no requests, members of the public to be heard on this item. Are there members of the council wishing to be heard? Mr. Holden, followed by Mr. Labange.
Graffiti program where we have some businesses in the community would like to fix some posters on the walls of the building, beautification, the intent, and that is, they would be required to maintain the walls surrounding that poster. And also, Mr. President, in a four-block area, they would also remove graffiti at their own cost. So it's an anti-graffiti program. It's a trial program, pilot program within the 10th District. This ordinance is approved, but it had to be modified. It's simply an amendment to the existing ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Holden and Ms. Labange.
I just want to thank you, and also if we get reports from time to time on the progress of that, so we could probably implement it in other parts of the city and the districts, it would be greatly appreciated, Mr. Holden. As always, you share that information, you and your staff, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
Glanter, Han, Holden, Labange, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Weiss, Zine, and Padilla.
Ten eyes.
That is approved. Well, that being an ordinance carries over for a second reading. I believe that is the end of the special meeting agenda. Let us now adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting. Mr. President, now is time for public comment on non-agenda items. I'll turn it over to Mr. Holden at this point.
We have a number of people who would wish to speak here in the special comment section and more. They usually allocate about 10 minutes to that purpose, but we have more than 10 cards. However, we can hope that they can speak for one minute per. It's been a long evening, and I know some of you would like to go home, but you still want to be heard. So the first person would be Joy Katsky. From San Diego.
Desde San Diego.
Came a long ways.
Viajo much distance para llegar acá.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to address your council today. My name is Joy Katska, and I am before you today to inform you of what I believe to be a very serious safety flaw within the County of Los Angeles, specifically the Department of Housing, Building, and Safety, as well as code enforcement. A serious uniform building code safety violation was called to my attention three years ago today. When my 20-year-old UCLA scholar fell 50 feet to his death from a fourth-story balcony of an apartment complex in Westwood. Two students fell from a fourth-story balcony from the very same apartment complex only 11 months prior to my son falling. After my son's fall, and only upon my persistent insistence, did code enforcement inspect the unit from which he fell. It took four months for code enforcement to issue an order to comply with regard to the balcony being too low and out of code compliance. It took seven and a half months for code enforcement to issue an order to comply with regard to the threshold. That is the metal casement that holds in place, the sliding glass door leading to the balcony. The threshold measured 2 and 1/2 inches. Code is 1/2 inch according to the order to comply. My son tripped on the threshold with his back foot, hit the 35-inch balcony wall from 50 feet above, which is designed to prevent falls such as these, and fell to his death. A death that, in my opinion, was preventable. The threshold and balcony in the unit from which he fell were repaired. However, I became very concerned about the other 105 units on this particular property and the safety of the other tenants. After all, if three people fell in an 11-month period of time, who would be next? I became assertive with request to code enforcement to inspect the other units. I solicited assistance from then-Councilman Fuhr's office, to no avail. Finally, in November 2001, with help from UCLA and Councilman Weiss's office, the remainder of the units were inspected. My chief concerns were the thresholds and balconies. It is my understanding that a determination was made that the threshold problem existed and continues to exist throughout the complex. There were some balconies under 36 inches, which was the minimum height requirement that was enforced by code enforcement, and I understand those balconies were corrected. As I stand here today, eight months from the time the orders were issued to comply, regarding the threshold statutes, they remain out of compliance, and this is in the 105 The Housing Department has scheduled a manager's meeting, which took place this morning. It was continued to some future date. This hearing is to determine whether or not to turn the matter over to the city attorney for criminal action or whatever action he sees fit. In the meantime, tenants remain living in harm's way. It appears the building and safety may have approved the plans inappropriately. However, the irony is that the plans were and are nowhere to be found, not only for the building from which my son fell, but from the sister building right across the street, a 60-unit complex, which was inspected by code enforcement in April 2002. It is my understanding that similar threshold issues exist on that property, owned and operated by the same principals. We have been searching for the plans for over two and a half years now. Not even a subpoena was able to disclose their whereabouts. This is a small issue. A larger citywide issue has unfolded as the result of my attempts to amend the uniform building code to create a safer living environment for the citizens. Building Code to create a safer living environment for the citizens of the city of Los Angeles. I solicited the assistance of legislators in Sacramento to support my initiative to raise the minimum balcony height requirements in apartment complexes from 36 inches, as stated in the order to comply that I received with regard to my son's, the balcony from which my son fell, to raise that to 42 inches. I was successful in gaining support from Senators Dunn and Kuehl. I would like to submit their letters to your council, their letter dated February 21st, to Julie Bornstein, the director of the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development, in which they support an amendment to the Uniform Building Code, raising the standard from 36 inches to 46 inches. Julie Bornstein responded by letter dated April 3rd to Senator Dunn, stating in part, and this is quoted, "Department staff reviewed the language contained in Section 509.2, Exception 1, and determined the exception does not apply to barred rail heights for exterior balconies. That exception allows interior balconies to be..."
Just may I make one comment? We have 10 minutes, I think you have seven minutes.
I'm almost done. I timed it.
And Mr. Weiss is the councilperson for the district, and if you would submit that we fully report to him, we'll take immediate corrective action. We allocated one minute per person, and seven minutes, or you're gone. You want to comment, Mr. Weiss?
If I may, Mr. President. Ms. Katsky, I got to tell you, it is extraordinary that you, even though you've since left the city of Los Angeles, that you have kept up this battle. And it's even more extraordinary that, of all council meetings that we have scheduled, that you have come here tonight to the community to let everyone in this community know of your concerns and your impressive and extraordinary efforts to change the law so that no one else will have to suffer a fate that someone in your family unfortunately suffered. And in my office, we've been very moved by your plight and what has happened. I've asked the city attorney of Los Angeles to conduct a global review of how the city of L.A. is implementing these laws. And as you pointed out, Senator Sheila Kuehl has indicated that there may be room for improvement in laws, and there's arguably some areas where there is either ambiguity or the laws are not being interpreted uniformly. And that's certainly something that I know Mr. Delgado will want to get to the bottom of. I'll make sure he does that. And I'll never forget the fact that you came here tonight to show this council how strongly you feel about this. Thank you very much, Ms. Katsky.
You're welcome.
You're close, you have a closing statement. Carry on.
Well, I may, I don't know if you folks want copies. I brought documents from Sacramento and the correspondence from Sheila Kuehl, Senator Dunn, and Julie Bornstein. If I could only just say, the bottom line...
Care to be like this?
Pardon me?
Carry on.
The bottom line to where I was going to get with this is, what I have discovered is that, in fact, the codes, as the result of a study survey done by Sacramento, the building code, the Uniform Building Code, does reflect throughout this state that the minimum requirement is 42 inches in these scenarios. There is no amendment that needs to be made. The city of Los Angeles, since the mid-'80s, has been constructing, from my research, what I have found, since the mid-'80s, the minimum standard on those balconies has been 36 inches. Prior to the mid-'80s, it had been 42 inches. This is a big problem. It's a major problem throughout the city, it's a major safety hazard. And I am here to solicit your assistance and support in creating a safer living environment for your families, friends, and constituents, a fundamental right of all. Please help me. Help them.
Be assured that the Building and Safety code will be changed, if it hasn't already been mandated by the state. And it will be 42 inches. I'm sure Mr. Weiss and others who enjoy some motion calls it to happen. Thank you for coming around and sharing your story and your comments with us. Mr. Hu Chong Chang.
Mr. Hu Chong Chang. Good evening. Councilman Halden, I know you're working hard. I live in this area 37 years. First time complaining now. I live in Crenshaw, at Rodeo Avenue. Weekend cruise noise, over 10 years of that. But now, I talk to neighbors, everybody complains. First time. So police cannot control cruise. Make it Victoria Avenue, concrete block, Rodeo side and Coliseum side. That's not much needed money, too. So that's why I ask tonight. I got my sketch here. Thank you.
Get that from him. Amir, would you get his sketch? Thank you very much. Ms. Joan Alexander, please.
Recoge su dibujo, la señora Alexander.
Does she leave? Oh, here. Ms. Alexander, how are you?
I hopefully I'll make this very quick. My name is Joan Alexander. Excuse me. I'm a board member for the Camille Woods Homeowners Association, which is probably about a half a mile west of here. And I'm very, very pleased to be able to attend one of our city council meetings. I'm going to make it as brief as I can. Hearing the various council members' discussion about traffic light and safety, etc., that is one of the comments I would like to make on behalf of our homeowners. We have one entrance where we have to head south out of our complex onto Rodeo, which is a very, very busy street. And for several years, we have been trying to get help to get a street light. It's so dangerous that there are times where I think we all literally need to have helmets on, you know, and to avoid a crash coming from either direction, from the east and the west direction. So what I would like to just throw on the record, I have met with, is it Duran?
Duran.
Yes, he's going to be meeting with us at our homeowners association meeting pretty soon. But I would just like to have it on the record that we'd be considered, as the city council look at traffic lights being put around, we desperately need it. We've been going along for the last four years. So far, we haven't had any fatalities, but it's just a matter of time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Alexander. I just want to comment that the Camille Woods is in another district.
Correct.
Now you're in my district.
Yes.
I'll deal with the problem. Mr. LaBanche, you talked about a pothole by the Giliam Stadium. That was not in my district. It's not in my district, and I'll deal with that as well.
Thank you. And I'm sure that now that we're under your district, sir, we will get that light.
You will get that light. Jennifer Watson. Ms. Watson. All right. She leave already? All right. Kim Watson, Watson. Are they here still? No, they left. All right. We have Cora Kurtsey.
Kurtsey.
Kurtsey, are they still here?
Kurtsey se encuentra aquí.
All right. Somebody use their time. Kika Keith.
Kika Keith se encuentra.
Are you coming forward?
My name is Kika Keith. I'm the founder and executive director of Sweet Strings. It is a tuition-free music academy here in South Central Los Angeles. We offer free instruction on all classical instruments, all string instruments. Recently, we have been faced with a dilemma of being displaced. I have a thousand kids that are waiting to receive these lessons in our community because they don't receive them in their local schools. So I'm here today just to make an effort, and a plea to the council, that we need cultural arts centers for our youth. It is amazing, this is a great recreation center here in our community, but we need to stimulate the minds and the spirits of our youth. And it is very important, and I really make a plea, I have over 7,000 signatures from members of the community here that I will forward to all of the council members. I know there's Proposition K money, Proposition 40, and it's all in these positions, and we would really request that we give some sort of attention to the demand of the community and the needs of these youth, because they are being killed on the streets. They're killing each other, they're being incarcerated, they're being abducted, they're being beat by police. So we must have a safe haven for our kids where we can simulate their minds so that they know that they can create anything. So I would forward this information to all the council members who are currently in Mark Ridley Thomas's district. Unfortunately, he is not here, but I would definitely like to forward this information because those thousand kids that are waiting to get into the program are from everyone's district. So thank you so much, and I will forward this information to you all.
Thank you very much. Larry Herbert.
Larry Herbert.
My name is Larry Herbert, better known as L.A. Larry. I've been on radio for quite some time, KH Radio. Right currently, I'm working for it with these in the morning. I'm from the Mid-City area, and I'd like to commend Mr. Holden for a lot of things that he's got done in that area. And I really think he's done a good job.
Thank you, sir.
What I'm really interested in was the West Adams Corridor, which is like from La Brea, west towards Los Angeles. Actually, you know, that area has really hasn't changed much since the riots. And I understand there's a program that's already been implemented that they're going to improve that area. What I'd like to talk about is the, I'd like to thank you once again for the Mid-City Council program that makes the government more closer to the people. So that's one thing that I feel like I'm very much in tune with. I'd like to see if we can get some parks in that area, the Mid-City area, for some of the kids who now are using the street corners for their skateboards and that kind of thing. So, you know, there's a lot of land that hasn't been developed in that area, like corners, you know, since the freeway came in, that haven't been utilized, and it just seems like they're trying to find a way to utilize it. So I'd like to see if we can bring that up sometime in the meetings. The vacant lots, you know, since the freeway came in, the, you know, outward or whatever that we could utilize. Anyway, I'm so happy that it's in this area, this gym, and everything is great to have in this area. And I want to just...
No, I just want to thank the council. Thank you very much.
Mrs. R. Stroud.
Señora Stroud.
Tanita Jordan.
Tanita Jordan.
Stroud, I'm sorry.
Stroud, la señora Stroud.
Jordan, all right.
La señora Jordan.
Hi, good evening, members of the city council. Thank you for coming out today to our community. My name is Tanita Jordan, and I am on the West Adams Neighborhood Council. I'm one of the steering organizing committee members. My plea here today is for the youth. If you had a chance or know this area, you will know that the dividing line between this side and the other side is a great one, and there needs to be more youth services on the other side because it's night and day from the tracks. The tracks are a dividing line, and the neighborhood on the other side is getting ignored. There's a couch that's been sitting on the corner of Cochrane and West Haven for over a month. We have several attempts to get it picked up as follow-up calls, and we have had no response.
Wait, wait, where's this couch?
It's on the corner. If you drive by right now, it's still there. It's on the corner of Cochrane and West Haven. We've had calls in as far back as June, and we have not received any response. As we had one person come down to pick up the bulky item pickup, and we asked him if we could help him pick up the couch, and he said, no, he didn't have a call, so he could not pick it up. So my plea is for the quality of life on the other side of the tracks because it is largely different from what you see here. We do utilize this facility, however, it is blocked off from the other side. We have to go clear to Los Angeles, to Rodeo, back to Highlight Place, Hauser, to come through to the park. You could just come straight up Hauser, we had access. And that's my plea here today. I think the youth on the other side need some type of avenue to not indulge in those activities that are not productive. So I thank you for your time, but thank you for coming to the community, and I'm sure that members here appreciated your time from coming out. Thank you.
Well, thank you. My staff will get the exact location of the couch. Be assured, you come out there, and Friday it will be gone. And we have the baseball and football here, Little League football, also baseball and the gym, the basketball. So those kids who identify, don't seem to have much to do, let my staff guy know, we'll take care of it. Thank you.
Love you.
Bye-bye.
Muchas gracias.
We have Patricia Hayes.
Patricia Hayes.
Gloria Taylor would follow.
Gloria Taylor, después.
Good afternoon, members of the city council. I'm very pleased to be here. This is my first meeting. I'd like to join Councilman Halden. I'm so happy to be in your district. I'm really in your district, all right? And I know we're going to get work done because you always do things for your people. I'm calling, I'm calling. I meant to write a letter to you, but now that I'm here today, I can address personally. I invite you to come out to the 3800 block on Burnside Avenue. It's regarding our sidewalks. This has been an issue for a long time. Our sidewalks are a hazard. I can't even walk down our sidewalks. I walk in the street when I go to walk in the morning because our sidewalks are broken, and they're rising up from the roots and the, you know, from a beautiful trees. We don't want to lose our trees, but we want our sidewalks fixed without asphalt. We want to look like Beverly Hills. It's ridiculous the way our sidewalks look. Councilman Halden, please come out and look at them for us. They're rising up and broken. Actually, every morning I walk, and I cannot walk on my own block, and I pay good tax dollars. Please help us. I beg you.
Aren't you south of Rodeo?
Yes.
Yes. And you were in north...
I'm off of Coliseum. 3800 block on Coliseum, 3800 Burnside.
You're south of Coliseum? You're south of Coliseum?
Yes, sir.
Well, that used to be the east. It'll be changed.
I know, you're here now. And I'm so happy. Amen, hallelujah. We're going to get something done in our neighborhood, and those sidewalks are going to be fixed, and my neighbors are going to be so happy. You know what? I'm going to talk to you personally today. Amen. That's all, one minute.
You should have been at the council meeting, but you weren't there at the time when I needed you, but that's all right.
I'll work for you. Hey, listen, I'm retired, and I'm going to work for you. I'm going to work, and I go door to door, and I got a big mouth.
I tell you, be assured, your sidewalks are going to be done. Thank you. You're in my district now. You're in my district now, you'll be all right. I'm Ms. Taylor. Her name is Gloria... Her name is Gloria Taylor?
Sí, mi nombre es Gloria Taylor.
I want the cameras to get this.
Las cámaras, por favor. Enfóquense en esto. Clientes satisfechos.
That's Gloria Taylor?
Sí, la señora Gloria Taylor.
I think she says she's happy to be in the county district.
Creo que ella ha dicho que está muy contenta por estar en el distrito 10.
All right.
See what I mean? You guys don't know how to vote?
Can you hear me?
Me escucha? Por favor, escuchen por mi falta de voz.
Soy miembro de Kai Cabral, which is a recreation sorority. And I'm talking on behalf of cities. Young people that are fans. We don't have a football stadium or a team. And we are 7 million people. And we did receive money from the census. They're supposed to be property sharing. The movie industry makes so much of it. Los dinero, vamos dinero todos los fines de semana que parece que se podría contribuir y vender monos para la ciudad para... But meanwhile, we have a Coliseum which would enable us to have a football team. And do it soon because the fans are very unhappy. All of our fans are saying we're being left out. But we don't have a team in Los Angeles. Because we run the largest cities. And would generate funds to us. So where is this sense of money that's supposed to come into our community after 10 years owning and doing this election? El dinero que después de salirnos hemos votado y hemos ganado esta elección para que las personas cuenten. Donde también vamos a expedir un bono de la ciudad que presentará ingresos también, compartir de ganancias. I mean Hollywood makes millions. And in the future, it'll probably be advantageous to us.
Que será también, creo yo, que será ventajoso para todos nosotros.
Second point I'd like to bring, if I may, is that our councilman, Mr. Nate Holden, with the senator, and... Assemblyman, I think. But had he won this last election, he would have been the first man of the minority to go to Congress at federal level, against the state level and the city level. And I'm sure with his expertise, maybe he could work this down. But I know it's the banks. All the banks have FDIC. And we are a member of the affirmative action. And he cannot discriminate because of race, color, and all those other things. But I'd like to ask Mr. Holden, what was on your mind 25 years ago when this bill was initiated? When you were a senator? And now, if you go into a bank and ask them for an insurance form, they won't give you one on your savings or on your checking or money that you might have lost in the bank. They will not give you the insurance. Because you have $100,000 insurance on it. Especially in our district. I wonder, could you explain what was true 25 years ago that caused you to write that bill? Thank you.
Podría explicar usted porque tú me hiciste que yo pueda escribir esta legislación. La legislación de... Que se refiere a la legislación...
You have what's called mortgage deficiency areas. And the lending institution were refusing to make loans in certain geographic areas. The loan to value ratio was different.
El porcentaje de préstamos era diferente en las áreas que representaba comparado a otros.
Which was a form of discrimination. Called redlining. And so I introduced a legislation based on the complaints that I received from the people that I represented. And it gives unfair practice on the part of lending institutions. And so, redlining was outlawed. And also made some attempts to do it in automobile insurance, whatever being established as well. It became law for the state of California. The federal bank board adopted... Dead anti-redlining legislation is law for the nation. And now, it's the law for the nation. And it happened because people in my district were being treated unfairly. And they caused me to introduce legislation. It's a tough bill to get enacted, but now it's law for the nation. Thank you for raising a law. But now it's law for the nation. Gracias por esta pregunta.
Right now with the Enron situation and things that are happening, they should have an application in the bank that you could file for FBI insurance. But they don't know where to get one from. And they don't have one there for you. And I wish someone could do something about that.
I'll tell you what we're gonna do. I have my staff person come over. Regarding the FBI insurance, whatever other protection you need. This is the way it gets started right here in the community. And I can't change the law in the state of California now, but we can influence that process. And I will through resolution, and my colleagues taking you here tonight. I'm sure. Angela, would you speak to the lady and find out what the worst complaint is? I think it's time for public comments. It's run. But thank you for coming. I've been making a statement. I want to thank each and every one of the public. And for those of you who are now in the 10th district. I know you're happy about that. We'll take care of that. And I also want to mention the fact that there used to be an Ebony showcase on Washington Boulevard.
There was an Ebony showcase in Washington Boulevard.
And it's now being known as the Washington Performing Arts Center. We put in about $10 million always to help my colleagues here. Give them a big hand. It'll be dedicated sometime, early part of the year. It's gonna be a fantastic facility for the young people like the one lady spoke of. What can they do? That's the place for them to go and to perform in a way where it's acceptable, where they can improve their quality of life for them and be more productive. Who knows? It might be Will Smith.
Podrías llegar hasta donde Will Smith. Necesitamos más personas como usted. Gracias, señor presidente.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
Gracias.
I just want to say that this is the end of it. This is the end of the coming. But we have more than 500 people came out tonight.
500 personas que se presentaron esta noche aquí.
This doesn't include public comment for today's meeting. No, I put a card in the public comment. Did you? Mr. Holden, did you have a card, Larry? Go ahead, Larry. Quickly, please.
I know, I know, I know that. I'll be very quick. I really wrote a card, folks. I really did. I wouldn't lie about this. I'm Melrose Larry Green. And I came here to tell you that I'm totally against secession. About an hour or so ago, this room was filled with people. And I know the LA City Channel is here. I saw maybe one TV truck. But I'm sorry, the channel 245791113 are not here to cover a room that, let's say, about 85% filled with African-American people, who are homeowners, taxpayers, part of a vibrant community. The media ruins pretty much everything in this city. And I don't want to ruin anybody's parade and bring up any names. But this lawyer, yes, he knows what I'm talking about at the press conference he was holding yesterday. We don't need riots again in the city of LA. And I'm here to say that this is a great event. I'm sorry I'm not the mayor or the councilman, but Tom LeBons is a great guy in the 4th district. And I'm thrilled to be here. I'm out of material. Thank you very much. I'm gonna go study the violin with this lovely lady back here. Thank you.
Are there members of the council, are there any announcements this evening?
You know, I just kinda make one comment.
Ms. Hock?
Thank you. I just want to say that I just introduced a motion on the city council to amend our council rules that would mandate that the city council from here on out would hold no less than 15 meetings every two years out in the community. Do you think that's a good idea? Because as good intentions as we think we have, I thought it was a good idea to actually put it in our rules that all city councils from here to eternity would hold their meetings out in the community. Thank you.
I want to thank you, Ms. Hock, for the record. We've been doing that already. The first was in your district down in Wilmington. We've been to Conover Park, we've been to Hollywood, we've been to Exposition Park. Now here in the 10th council district, and we'll continue it. But as a good citizen approached you and approached me as well, he said, who's to say that when Ms. Hock is gone, and Ms. LeBons is gone, and Ms. Padilla is gone, and all the good council members are gone, that future councils won't continue this? So through your motion, we have institutionalized and we'll continue. Mr. LeBons? No, I agree. I just wanted to thank Mr. Holden and his staff. Give his staff a big hand here for the work that they've done. Want to thank, and I hope I'm not jumping on you, Mr. President, but our sound people who bring the sound out and all their work and all their technicians. This is important to be in the community. And I had a wonderful experience always whenever we meet in the neighborhood. And I just want to let you know, I was the one who seconded the great motion of Councilwoman Janice Hock to have us come to the neighborhoods. So behind every great woman is a man. Mr. Rex?
Yeah, now we're in the mode of... Thank you, everyone. I do want to thank Redding Park. We first opened our first skateboard park over at Lincoln Park. It's lovely to be watching on Channel 35, we're northeast. The young kids, the young folks, they have a skateboard park to go to now. That's the historic Lincoln Park. Thank you so much, Redding Park, and Mary Hock for the great work.
Thank you, Mr. Rex. Are there any other announcements? I just wanted to thank the wonderful folks here in the 10th district. When I was with the LAPD, I worked down in this area. Wonderful people out here. Wonderful community support out here. We had great support here tonight from the LAPD, from the park rangers, from the community. And this was a standing room only when we arrived earlier this evening. And coming from the far west San Fernando Valley, it's a real joy coming down here and sharing this evening with you. And I support my colleague's motion to bring our council to the people. We encourage people to join neighborhood councils. Your government is you. You are the government. God bless y'all, and good night. Thank you, Mrs. Seinfeld. Thought before our leave, we're not appearing yet. We're not quite appearing yet. Are there any other announcements? If not, then I too want to congratulate Councilman Holden and his staff, all the volunteers, and especially the caterers who made today's meeting such a great success. Before we adjourn, part of the council agenda is also to sometimes have adjourned tributes in memory of outstanding individuals. I would ask us to all please rise for adjourned motions.
Pido que todos se pongan de pie para levantar la sesión.
Mr. Holden?
Mr. President, members, sad to announce that Mr. Ross Henman, he passed away Saturday, July 13th. He suffered from a long illness. Mr. Henman was the owner of Colby Posting Printing. The company was the largest and one of the oldest political printing companies in Los Angeles. Over the years, Colby has printed yard signs, posters, and banners for just about every elected official and candidates in the city of Los Angeles State as well. He printed my posters. Sunday, July 21st, at 1:00 p.m., at the Palace Verdi Shores Clubhouse located at 2275 San Pedro. And he survived by his wife Marilyn, three sons, Glenn, Larry, and Lee, one daughter, Kristy Irvin. So, Mr. President, we adjourn his memory. All members.
Other tributes? And I just want to add, I think I speak for the entire council when I say that's where my long signs have been printed up. They were great. Not a successful politician exists without having their long signs printed up there. I remember many a trip down to 12 Place, not just for my campaign, for other campaigns I've been involved with. So maybe we can get the German certificate printed up in a long size, long sign size and shape. And we'll take it with us to the service. All the people, please. Please call the roll.
Se levanta la sesión. Tome lista.
Thank you all very much. This meeting is now adjourned.